Soon as I adjust my chair. All right. Staff ready? At this time, I would like to reconvene our meeting from February the 11th. And we will start with invocation by Mr. Underwood.
Give me off stand, please. Well, gracious in Heavenly Father, once again, we come before you asking for your blessings. Heavenly Father, we give thanks to you for all the many blessings and how you watched over us day and night. Heavenly Father, we ask you to put us on one accord today that we may continue to do the business of Caroline County to the best of our abilities. Heavenly Father, we ask that you watch over our service members home and abroad, protect our first responders and all those who give service. These are all blessed and we ask in your precious name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, our nation under God, in Israel, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. And Mr. Forehead, you're excused from, you know, having to move that hand too much around here.
Wearing a suit's difficult at this juncture.
We're glad that you're here, that everything went well with your surgery. All right, tonight, we have present, we have Mr. Jeff Black from Western Caroline, Mr. Thomas, Foy Thomas from Mattapanay, I am Nancy Long from Port Royal. We also have Mr. Clay Forehand from Madison District, Mr. Jeff Sealy from Bowling Green, and Renji Underwood from Reading Church. We'll go one at a time for opening comments. Mr. Black?
Thank you. Just wanted to thank everyone, the support from the county for the polar bear plunge. Mr. Cully for DJing, Mr. Cully always does an excellent job with that. This year, it raised right around $40,000. So for the nine organizations that were involved, so that's quite a bit. Caroline's Promise came in first, they won the Polar Cup. St. Mary's came in second, but thank you to everyone who was involved in that fundraising. So many people are very supportive and businesses, we had $10,000 in advertising support from, for the plunge. Next thing I want to talk about really quickly is there's, not that this would be shocked everyone, but there seems to be a kind of misnomer out there that the board spent $800,000 for pickleball courts and that's not really accurate. The context is pickleball courts were part of that $800,000. We added a tennis court for the tennis team at the high school so that that way could have, you know, most schools, high schools have four tennis courts for playing. And then the last thing is there's going to be lights added to that. So I think context is kind of very, very important when it comes to, comes to that. And then finally, I want to thank board members and so forth who have reached out to me for a personal situation, so I want to thank all of you. So that's it. Thank you.
And Mr. Black, it was two tennis courts, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry, two tennis courts. Yeah, it was two tennis courts, four pickleball courts and.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes, ma'am. I have a few. Again, to remind folks that the General Assembly is considering bills that would take away zoning authority from the county. I think Solar's the one they're discussing now, and there are some others, so be aware of that. We also have a citizen who is celebrating her 100th birthday. Mrs. Helen B. Carson, I believe she's in the Madison District. I was sent a text from another constituent. So we want to congratulate her. If we get a little more in information, we'll put together a resolution and make sure we present it to her. The Black History Month presentation we always do to the Caroline NAACP. And I asked Dr. Hudson of the Sunday School Union if she would join us. And I believe I made a mistake and gave her the wrong time. I said six o'clock and not 6:30, so she was probably here or not. But I will make sure she gets the resolution. I see Mr. and Mrs. Rock from the NAACP, so we will talk to them shortly. And last, I want to thank Mr. Ted Lambert for getting the Sunday School Union video up and running on the board in front of the gym. It's the first time we've been able to do that. We've been trying for two years, it seems like, and the file was so big, we finally found a way to do it. So thanks to Mr. Lambert, and there's another version we're going to try to put up. Those are my comments. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Do you have any comments? I'm sorry, Clay.
No, I'll have an agenda item on that.
All right, great. Mr. Sealy?
Yes, thank you. And I have a couple of slides that I'd like to put up because these are pretty, pretty interesting slides. I'd like to use my opening board comments to highlight a show and show a selection of artwork done by the Caroline County Public School students. When I saw these on social media, I was struck with a number of things, not only the color, the work and the attention to detail, but how expressive they are of our history and preservation efforts on a number of levels. Probably the biggest lesson is that they included the present history and preservation being made in our lifetimes that as well, we can, we can also see what they, how they view things as they, as they've been to different places and what was important to them. And there's also a couple of portraits that I thought were noteworthy as well. The first slide, now this is, this is from Bowling Green Elementary School, Mrs. Juan Rose's class. It is of the Commissioner of the Revenue, Mr. Bassoon. Mr. Bassoon, I think you should get this and frame it and put it in your office. Can we go to the next slide?
The hearts are a nice touch.
Again, this is, this is, this is another elementary school student. It's of Mr. Underwood. Interesting little story, good colors. Again, think that Mr. Underwood, that's probably framable by you. You should try to, maybe you could purchase it from the kids. Can we go to the third one? I thought this was interesting. This is, this is the Port Royal Museum of American History in Port Royal. I thought this was well done. This again is an elementary school student. You know, I think these are all second, first and second graders. Is what I think they are. Let's go to the fourth one. Now, these are from the high school. This is the Port Royal Museum of Medicine, which I thought really came out well, having been there many times myself. Slide number five, this is going to be historic and that someday we're going to replace this. This is Long, and this is the Port Royal Volunteer Fire Department. Yes, it does. See, somebody really remembered to see the old above groundwater tank because it hasn't been there in a number of years. Number six. This is Oxford Mount Zion Church. Again, another high school student. And number seven, last but not least, this is Frederick Douglass with a quote, "If there is no struggle, there is no progress," famous quote by him. And I thought this was interesting. Again, this was a high school student. Thank you, David. I also want to report, and Shamika Latney Baker asked me to, to report this out, that Caroline's Promise Coat Drive, which Susan and I did participate in, Shamika contacted me this afternoon to say that it was a huge success with over 350 coats donated. Many of the coats were distributed after winter break to kids in hotels and campgrounds. They had no coats, and it was from pre-K to 12th grade. So the coat drive was a huge success, and she just wanted that to be mentioned tonight. So those are my opening board comments, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. Mr. Underwood?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just have a couple. I didn't attend the Black History Program on yesterday, but certainly I watched it on YouTube. And I want to thank Mr. Long and Mr. Taylor and congratulate Mr. Thomas for his award yesterday. It was just kind of reminded me as I heard Mr. Taylor speak about the elementary schools that were, and the preschools that were in the communities that were small for children to get to. And I think we really have to take a look at that to make sure that those preschools and those Head Start programs are available to everyone. So I want to thank him for those comments and look forward to dialoguing about schools. Last month, Mr. Sealy and I had the pleasure of going down to the General Assembly. And I think it would be who, us, to look at those agenda items that they have on the agenda. And maybe sometime on YouTube, listen, there's some very interesting discussions and some dialogue. And I think we can play a bigger part in some of the decisions that are made there than I originally thought we could. But I was pleased to be able to go down and dialogue with legislative members. So I think we all should make sure that our voices are heard. And then finally, I was kind of surprised by Mr. Black's comments about people being unnerved by us fixing the tennis court so that we could be up to snuff and put in the pickleball court. Some of the monies that, that was used for that came from the cigarette tax, I believe. Without that cigarette tax, we would certainly have been in the hole by $800,000. So thanks to Mr. Bassoon and his office and all the work that they do, the cigarette tax is bringing us in monies that really is not coming out of the taxpayers' pocket. It's coming through people, coming through as people are buying cigarettes, traveling to and fro. So sometimes, you know, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't. And in this case here, it's disappointing that we would not want to build our parking wreck department and have a quality program. So that was disheartening to hear that, Mr. Black, but certainly I'm supporting everything that we've done. I think we're doing it what's right for the county. And we will, we'll continue to push what's right for the county. And those are my comments, Ms. Long, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. And I also attended the Black History Month function last night. It was thoroughly enjoyable. There was a big crowd, good music. And I appreciate it being asked to speak and look forward to being there next year. Want to remind everybody, if you haven't heard, schools close because we're either getting in blizzard of one inch or 21 inches. Take your choice, place your bet. We don't know what's coming, but schools close for tomorrow. And regardless of how much snow we get, help keep our first responders safe by staying home. And those are my comments. Alrighty, so that brings us to any amendments to the agenda? Do we have any thing that anyone wants to change, add?
I just would, wanted us to set a date or time or have a discussion on the scope of the building down at the Lo Massy Park. I don't know if y'all had that discussion in my absence. We just need to bottom out on a time where we can talk about it in depth and get some ideas. I think we were going to supposed to have some ideas at the next meeting, I believe.
That's, that's fine with me. I think it's, it's a good thing to talk about what we all have visions of and, and move forwards with how we're going to do it.
I think that's, I, I agree. And what I was, what I was trying to do was to meet with Mr. Shee, we'll just talk about what a 4,000 square foot, 5,000 square foot, to give us some options in cost so that we would have some of their, what it would kind of, what that would give us in terms of cost. And so I'm, I'm okay with having it on the second agenda. Do we meet twice next month, correct? What about, how about the second meeting in March? Would that be appropriate?
I think we need to have the discussion before we engage an architect.
No, no, I mean, just us.
Yeah, but I'm saying we need to have that discussion before staff goes out and, and gives direction to an architect or what design.
We haven't, we're waiting for that. We're just doing in-house drawings.
Okay.
Right.
And maybe some photos or.
Right.
Other, okay. I just didn't, like, I'm.
I don't think we could find really any community space things by name, but we've drawn up, Ted's been working on some things, and so we're trying to price that out. But basically, the room, the room that was there.
Mr. Cully, before you leave the podium first, is everyone generally okay with having a, a meeting to discuss Lo Massy Park?
Or do we want to make it an agenda item?
I thought we were going to put it on the second meeting in March. Not a separate meeting.
So you don't want to have like a work session then?
I wouldn't think it would be necessary. I think once Mr. Lambert does, has the drawings available for us to take a look at, we can tweak and do it where we want, but it'll give us a starting point. I think we're all looking just for a starting point.
All right, so agenda item at the second meeting in March, correct? So general.
That'll take care of my, any agenda item I was going to, if I'm good.
Yeah, we're not going to hire an architect until everybody kind of agrees where we're going.
Right. Thank you.
I make a motion, we accept the agenda as presented?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. All right. That takes us to presentations and reports. And we do have one presentation this evening. And Mr. Rock, River Rock, you're here, I think we'll get you and and Mrs. Rock, come on up too. We're gonna, I'm gonna read this and then we'll get you to come up and we'll get a picture taken. And thank you again for last night. It was enjoyable. Okay, so this is, this is a resolution declaring the month of February Black History Month in Caroline County. Whereas the history of the Commonwealth of Virginia and the United States of America includes numerous accomplishments and contributions of African Americans. Whereas Caroline County in particular has been fortunate to benefit from the contributions of its native sons and daughters of African descent. And whereas the contributions of these Caroline natives are noteworthy and have benefited not only Caroline County, but in many cases, the Commonwealth of Virginia and the United States as well. And whereas the contributions of African Americans often go unnoticed and unappreciated by many Americans. And whereas it is important and fitting to recognize and celebrate the significant role African Americans have played in the development of our great country, state, and nation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of February as Black History Month in Caroline County and encourages county residents to take advantage of the presentations, displays, and other materials available to learn more about the contributions of African Americans adopted this 18th day of February 2025. Signed by Charles M. Cully, Clerk of the Board, and Nancy L. Long, Chairman.
No, I'm not, I'm not, but I just like to say on behalf.
Here's a microphone, so everybody can hear you.
I got you.
We're just, we'd like to say that God is good. And on behalf of the Caroline County branch of the NAACP, we appreciate the board's participation and recognition. It takes a village, and we're a part of this community, and we just want to work together to ensure that those that are less fortunate have a, have a fashion. So we just say God is good, and we're going to continue to do the civil rights work that we need to do in order to, to be a positive beacon in this community for the citizens of Caroline County. And Madam Chair, we do have a second resolution for the Sunday School Union, which I'll deliver to Dr. Hudson.
My apologies, it wasn't on my notepad. So you're going to take care of delivering that? Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Madam Chair, do we need to amend the agenda then to add that to the agenda since it wasn't on there? We didn't do an, we didn't do an amendment to the agenda?
We can do that retroactively.
Retro, we can, okay. I said we can do it now and just be done with it.
So I'd make that motion that we amend the agenda to include among the presentations, the NAACP and the Caroline Sunday School Union.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Same one. We're not going to read it. We're not going to read it.
We're moving on to appointments. First appointment is for border zoning appeals at large. Do we have anyone who's come forward or have any ideas? Anyone showing any interest? Okay.
I might have an individual interest if I modify it first.
All right. So can we all make a note of that so we can bring back somebody for next month so we can get that position filled? We also need an appointment for the Rapid Hanaic Area Alcohol Safety Action Program Board.
So I see that's another one we need to find.
Yeah. How often do they meet?
I'm not sure, Madam Chair. I, I don't think it's frequently, but I can, we can check on that.
If you could send everyone out, how often they meet and where they meet, it's a lot easier to ask someone to serve if I know where they have to go and how often.
Okay. Well, we'll do that, plus a little description of what the appointment entails.
Wonderful. Maybe the same thing for the border zoning appeals and just send it out to all of us. Thank you so much, Mr. Parton. This brings us to our consent agenda. Any questions?
I have a question on B that, and it's because of the change, and I was going to say if we could get, nowhere does it say how many meetings anybody can attend. And before, there used to be a number of meetings. And maybe I missed it, but I looked for how many or how often, is there anything in the new code?
Well, if the governor declares a state of emergency.
Right, right, right. Then I know that one. I just didn't know if.
Yes, Mr. Sealy, so you're talking about if someone wants to remotely participate for personal reasons, right?
Correct.
That's usually where there was the cap.
There used to be a cap on that.
If there isn't one, we could, we could certainly add one in. But let's see, I think it is, it's 20, let me, I'm looking at five, section five, subsection four. However, the member may not use remote participation due to personal matters more than two meetings per county year or 25% of the meetings held per county year rounded up to the next number. So that it's, it's two or 25%, whichever is greater. So I mean, I guess this is, it's going to be two meetings for you guys, but.
And I just, just so nobody was caught by surprise when it happens, and I agree with Mr. Thomas, the governor gave us a state of emergency, but we were able to just delay our meeting, which was great.
And, and to clarify, that, the, what they did with this section of FOIA is break it in, break it out. Because during the pandemic, these were all in one section. And actually, what's motivating this updated policy is to incorporate those changes to the law. So the all electronic meeting is completely now stands alone by statute. Remote participation, you need to have this updated policy. And I just thought I'd go ahead and clean it up now so that we have it on hand for if any remote participation is needed.
Should we add the number of meetings so there's no ambiguity?
It's in there. So in, in, in section, that's what I was reading.
It isn't, so I did miss it.
Five, four, yeah.
I missed it.
So it's two meetings is a max.
Or 25%.
Yeah, and the, the biggest, sorry, I'm sporing, yes.
Two meetings or 25%, whichever is greater.
Whichever is greater, yeah. So I mean, you meet, you meet more than 12 times a year, so it's going to be.
Right, 25% of 12 is not, is more than.
Oh, right, yeah, so I guess.
It's actually 25% of 18.
It's going to be, yeah, so you could have four. So you can drop that if you don't want that number.
Or we can stay with two.
Yeah.
Either way.
Now, I've got a question. Does that include work sessions? It should only include board meetings.
This, I think this is just applies to, well, I think this applies to any, let's look at the definitions. Board committee, and this applies to committee meetings or board meetings. So I think it would apply to both.
I don't think it should apply to work sessions.
I don't know that we have a choice, I guess.
We're not supposed to do anything with work sessions. So it shouldn't apply to work session.
So you want the cap to only apply to board meeting?
Right.
Yeah, that's fine. We can, we can make that change.
It seems to me if we're not voting on anything, it's a discussion. It shouldn't, it should be
Doesn't matter where you are.
In a different class than when we're voting and making changes. So just maybe clarification on that?
So, yeah, and that's an easy fix, Mr. Thomas. So what we would do is just have that subsection four read more than two regular board meetings or 25% of the regular board meetings, if you want that to be the cap. Do you want to keep both in?
Yeah.
I, I would like to, yes.
And again, these are just the guidelines. You can, just like your rules of order, you can, you know, make amendments. But the big change here is, as revised, you, the default assumption will be that remote participation is permitted, and you don't have to go through the process that you previously did to authorize it. However, if you had a situation where the member was over that four number, then you would have to make a motion and go through the process. But if these guidelines are met, these prerequisites, then it's default approved. So I'll I'll state for the record so that you can vote on it tonight is that the change, what's before the board now is amended remote participation policy in section five subsection four will now read in relevant part. The member may not use remote participation due to personal matters more than two regular board meetings per calendar year or 25% of the regular board meetings held per calendar year rounded up to the next full number, whichever is greater.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have one question, Mr. Sealy.
Yes.
We're specifying out for personal reasons. Are there other reasons that would be acceptable that this would not apply to?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so there are, these are the four grounds here that allow remote participation. So the member has a temporary or permanent disability or other medical conditions that prevents the physical attendance. So that's anything from surgery to the flu. No cap on those. Same thing for a member of the, a member of the board member's household family that needs care. You can remotely participate for that reason, no cap on the number of those. And then this is straight from the statute, but the member's principal residence is more than 60 miles from the meeting location identified for such meeting. That doesn't apply to any of you, but it's it's just drawn from the statute, so I included it. You can delete it if you want, but I'm mirroring the authorizing language.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on any topics on the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to have have a discussion on agenda item C. Mister, can you elaborate? That's just really a letter of recommendation from the board that says a given company is allowed to participate in Caroline for the the B program. We've got Verizon and we've got Comcast.
Comcast, Breeze Line and Verizon.
Given the definition of B.
But if we, if we.
B is what?
B, B is a federal program that is designed to bring service. So it's a block granted to the state. The state DHC D initiates it and it's to bring service to houses that are, that may have been missed due to errors in the previous grant outlines.
That's what I wanted to, that's why I pulled it because when we're running the lines now for Verizon and for Breeze Line, people who are so far off the road are not connected.
Both grants, the Verizon and Breeze Line, both contractors that are working under the 23 batty grant
Right.
are delivering service to that address regardless of distance.
And we have examples already in Western Caroline where driveways were nearly a mile long.
Yeah, that's not an issue.
The B program.
That are missed. That's what I'm saying.
So the B program is designed, we did have, we've got a couple of small situations where, for example, a provider may have identified an address as being served by them. And so by law, they were removed from the grant.
Right.
And then they come back and say, no, we didn't serve those. So we ended up with some addresses that need service. This B program is going to fill in those blocks, but thanks to the Board of Supervisors in Caroline County, we do have universal coverage as our goal under the grants that we currently have in place, but there will still be some single addresses that that may have issues. The B program in itself is not designed to extended line. For example, if you live in an area that is currently served by Breeze Line or Comcast and your driveway is over a certain distance, extending the cost of the line down that driveway can be very expensive. Currently, the state has a program called LECAP line extension. And under that program, they recently raised the limit. At one time, the household income level was 75,000. It's now around 173,500 income for the house. If you feel like, you know, if you're in that situation, so you're in an area that's currently served by Breeze Line or Comcast under the old system where there's no, you know, way to get that line down. Reach out to us using the broadband inquiry form on the county website and we can help you through that process. But it is totally a process that's applied for from the state and so we can point you in the right direction to get applied for that assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome, Mr. Underwood. And Mr. Underwood, I would also say that you know, people putting in the lines are are humans and we all know there are houses in Caroline that you can't see from the road, even if you go back a little ways. In my district, there was a new house, so it wasn't showing up on some of the the satellite pictures. And she got missed and they were, you know, once I got a call and called them, it got done and they ran it all the way back down to her house, even though they had already fished in that area. So what I'm saying to citizens is if you need it and you haven't gotten it and you're in the grant area, you gotta let somebody know so that we can fill in the gaps and get the right people in touch with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair. Motion to approve the consent agenda, second with the with the corrections on the remote meeting policy.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Unfinished business. Number four. Let me flip some pages here. Alright, who's taking this one? I guess it's number five. No, no, it's four.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I just wanted to remind you that the public hearing for this was held on January the 28th. And at that time when staff presented this to you, we had not received any public comment. But there was a letter received on February the 11th prior to the last scheduled board meeting from the Fredericksburg Area Builders Association. So they have provided some correspondence for your consideration as part of this amendment. I do have the chief here with me tonight to attempt to answer some more of the questions that were discussed on January 28th. I can try to address questions you might have at this time.
Does anyone have any questions for the chief?
I, I kind of have a a statement. The more that I'm in parking lots and this will probably go along with Chief Loftus's comments is that the parking lots are getting tighter and tighter and the vehicles are getting bigger and bigger. All this, the vehicles are getting smaller is just not true. I was getting getting gas this afternoon at the Fort AP Hill Station and there were two trucks and they were utility kinds of trucks with trailers. I mean, when you look at them pulling in and I look at around and I look at who's actually going to some of these facilities now. Royal Farms comes to mind. I saw some trucks in there. I'm like, we're not getting smaller and and somebody goes in and stops. You're kind of stuck. You can't back up. You can't go forward. So I think the wider aisles makes much more sense. I, I under, I've seen the letters. I've read what they've said. But the bottom line is what do you do when everybody's hemmed in with with what's going on? And the Sheets and Wawa are another good example. You know, I've been in both of those and when there's a lot of traffic and there are big vehicles, you really can't move. So I just thought this was a good solution to the situation I've just seen over and over again. And maybe in in plan review for some of these, we can start to push some of this stuff out a little bit and this will help do that because people do not, I mean, when they're driving and they're going somewhere with these big vehicles, they just, they get motor homes are in in particular with towing cars. I mean, everywhere I go, I see those now. When they pull in to get gas or they pull into like even even a grocery store, they're parked someplace that we never even tried to accommodate that. It was never even thought of and I think that's become the issue. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Let me get Mr. Forehand.
Spoke with chief and I I'm a fan of the one or the other, either we extend the the length of the spaces or we extend the aisle. I think extend, making the walls wider is is my opinion the way we should go instead of doing both. It just seemed like, at least what was in my mind was it was two feet, two feet and then four, which made it eight feet, which I thought was excessive, but if we want to make the aisles four feet longer and then, I mean, four feet wider, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. I think that that solves his problems to a large degree, maybe not every problem, but it solves a lot of the problems.
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, we can live with an aisle that's 26 feet, two-way traffic. We can go down to 24 feet if it's a one-way, like if you're pulling in and your stalls are at an angle. We gave developers that option in the code. So 26 feet, we could certainly live with and keep the stall length the same for 90 degrees and then the rest of the document would would stay the same. I I will tell you, Mr. Sealy, you're correct and and we have, I brought some plans with me today to, if anybody wanted to see them. We have developers that are proposing 12-foot wide roads between condominiums or condos, if you will. And then their regular roads are only 18 feet wide. And so, and that's their second submission. And right, we tell them ahead of time, hey, this is, this is not sufficient. Go back, redraw them. So we're going back and forth. So having a little more teeth in the front end to say you're not meeting the ordinance, I think will be better off for us in the long run. But if you'd like to see those, we have those here today. And it's kind of where you live, sir.
Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, chief, the have we measured other places? I know like the Food Lion parking lot, sometimes it seems kind of tight. But this parking lot out here is great. Have we measured those to, you know, in comparison?
We've measured some. I didn't measure out here.
Okay, out here is great. So if this is the standard, that's what we ought to go to. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so I'll just tell you, in the fire code world, the fire truck access is 20 feet wide. That's for a pumper, 26 feet wide for an area. So we need to get the aerial to at least, example, if we're looking at condominiums, at least one side of that property. So if there's roads on either side, only one needs to be 26 feet wide. The others would be 20. So 26 feet wide is is big enough for us to get down it with just everything that we own.
Okay, it's really a safety issue.
It really is. And at the end of the day, if something happens and something burns down, they're going to come back to the county. They're not going back to that developer and say, why, why'd you build this? They're coming back to the county and say, why'd you approve this? So.
Chief, chief, based on your comment, you said if one is is required 20, the other would be 26. Would that be your recommendation or would it be both be 26?
Both be 26.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
20's tight.
That would be the.
20's tight.
Yes.
And my feeling is safety first. I read the letter. Life changes, safety first. Equipment's getting better. They're squeezing people in tighter. Got to get people out. They got to come first. I want to go with your, your recommended division, which you say 26 feet?
26 feet. And we'll reduce the parking stalls back down to what they were originally, 18, nine by 18.
So that's my feeling on it. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the 26 foot.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Thank you, chief. Alright, that takes us to number five, Keystone Information System enhancements.
Chair and members of the board, when we finally reached a point where we've installed into our test area for the commissioner's office and the treasurer's office, we're at a stopping point where we we need some enhancements that were not in the RFP when we bid this out before COVID. And so as they, Keystone has worked with those departments, they've discovered that they would like to have certain functionality that does not exist. And so with that, we brought you a list of those enhancements that need to be developed. The software needs to be developed so those things will work so that we'll be able to ultimately, you know, go live with the system. At current, we still hope and are planning to go live with the treasurer's office on July 1 and hopefully at the same time, near after that with utilities. And the commissioner's office will be further away because that's not a time enough for them to test all those enhancements that they need, but they may be able to go maybe first of the year or next next July. But it's imperative and the treasurer, I met with her last week, wants to get off of Bright. They're having some glitches on that now that she's ready to move because obviously the treasurer's office and finance are hooked together and we're not. We have Keystone for Finance and Bright where everything is being collected. So we're requesting this additional funds. Like I said, it wasn't planned at that time with the RFP that we put on the street for some of these enhancements. And I do have a president of Keystone here. If you have any questions directly for the company or if you have any questions for me.
I have a question.
I have a couple of questions.
First.
Mr. Thomas first.
Previously, you stated, I believe, that that these enhancements, Keystone believed were applicable to all their customers and we were going to share the cost, but it's something, the point is I need to make sure it's something that's going to be included in the basic software from now on. Is that the case?
I would imagine it'd be included in the basic software once they've developed it and it's marketable to other counties.
Is the president here to say that?
Judd will come up. I can't answer for the company on their process. And I do know that some of the things that they've decided and they're not, we're not, that we're getting enhancements, you're not being charged for for that very reason because it 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 made sense for them to develop.
We appreciate that. It's good to see you again, sir.
Good evening, you too. Thanks so much, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you, Mr. Cully. Yes, exactly what you're saying. We have, we've gone through with those offices, the requested enhancements. Most of them are really, really good ideas for the product generally. And so what we've done is we have discounted and shared the cost. In other words, and we've shown that in detail when we gave the proposal.
And we appreciate that.
Yeah, because it's going to benefit us, it's going to benefit other counties in Virginia as we go forward with this product. So the other answer to that question is yes, we're building a standardized product with a release control that's going to roll forward. These are not customizations for Caroline County.
That's the point because if they're customizations, every time there's an upgrade, we'll have to spend more money to make that customization work.
That's the old way of doing things back in the 80s and 90s and so forth, and we've moved well beyond.
It's the way doing things in the 2010s too.
Yeah, maybe so.
Alright, I just wanted to check to make sure and I appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I have had a plethora of questions of what's happened to Vamanet. What are we going to have? How are people going to get to it?
Vamanet is gone. That was a product by a company that was bought out. So that was Stonewall Technologies, which we ran, it ran on the AS400. And that was the, what you hear referred to as KAMA. And so last year, sometimes the commissioner revenue came to you and asked, could they buy a software called Vision that actually bought out Stonewall Technology and was going to turn it off? And so we've installed Vision and all that same information that is on Vamanet is now available on the website through through Vision.
It may be available, but I'm not sure it's correct, is the dilemma.
Some of the initial stuff had 25 on it for some reason. I think they've changed that to 24.
Can Mr. Bassoon come up and, he's got his hand up, because I don't know about anybody else, but I've been asked that question more times.
But that's, that's not a Keystone issue.
And I do not know the answer.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is that related to the software at all?
Well, that's why I'm asking Mr. Bassoon to come up because I'm not sure I understand what we're doing.
Good evening, everyone. So following up with what Mr. Cully said, the Vamanet has gone away due to the other product. All of the information from Vision will now be updated to the county GIS system, which is Civic Vanguard, Civic Vanguard. And they are in the process of upgrading everything, not only for the commissioner's office, but planning and zoning and some different things. Leon wanted to add some more features and different stuff like that. But it has nothing to do with the Keystone on the tax pass system and all that, the billing and none of that stuff. But the timeline for the second phase for the Civic Vanguard piece for the public information should be sometime towards the end of February, which is around.
should be sometime towards the end of February, which is around now. Um, I saw a test of um the sample of what they were going to provide, and it looked very similar to Vaminet, if not more.
When will we see that?
That would have to be answered by um um the the gentleman, Jamie Christiansen.
Okay, so they're not rela-, I wasn't sure if they were related or not related, because it looked like we lost one and gained one and there was a gap.
Two, two different things.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Underwood.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so I'm not at all thrilled with where we are. I'm just going to say that point blank. Because I don't want to, because I listened to and asked a question before about cut over dates and how much money have we spent with Keystone year-to-date total?
We we're, we haven't paid our full contract yet.
No, that's not my question.
I don't know the year-to-date.
We we don't know how much money we've spent with them.
Not standing here, I I, you know, I can get you that.
Before I go any further, I want to, I want that answer. I don't, I don't want to just ask a blank, I I want to context my question.
Okay.
So you're going to provide it or can somebody provide it?
I can look it up if you want to go to another agenda item.
No, I'm, I'll.
I mean, I don't have a finance director that's sitting here with a computer handy, so I I don't, I don't have that. I can look it up.
You don't have your computer where you can look it up?
I do, I'd have to turn it on and I've said if you want to move to another agenda item.
No, I have another uh uh question, so I'll, I'll con- continue. The the total cut over date for Keystone is when? Was was fully implemented?
We haven't set that.
How long have we been going through this process?
For pieces of it, I mean, four years, four years, four years.
We we signed the contract with them how long ago?
Yeah, I think so too, twenty-one. It was after COVID, sometime in twenty-one maybe.
And I know some members of the board aren't concerned that this is how it takes place. How many other counties are using this system?
So between counties and school divisions, because the financial software that you're using now and the payroll software, it runs in both. There are seventeen organizations in the Commonwealth using this. And uh the Commissioner Treasurer side and utilities, inspections and permits, those are the pieces we're working to bring live now.
I'm only asking about counties that are using this system based on how we do our our billing, the proration and how many?
Okay, so you're asking about just the Commissioner Treasurer side, the tax side?
Yes.
Yeah, the tax side, that's seven, seven entities, yeah. In in Virginia and there's some in North Carolina.
That's fully? I'm talking about Virginia.
Okay.
I want to make sure. So how many in Virginia?
Seven.
So they're fully functioning?
Yes.
Can you provide that list?
Yes, I can get you the list and, but they're not all, and the reason for the enhancement request is that they're not all prorating counties. I think you referenced that a minute ago.
That's why I just asked, how many are prorated?
Prorating counties, there's one prorating county that's using the system, and that's Powhatan County.
That's who?
Powhatan.
Okay.
Yeah, you were the second prorating county that we were bringing on.
You 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 keep saying we're bringing on, that means that we're not there yet.
On those, on those modules, yes, you're not there yet.
So you're, so you're building a product.
We're enhancing a base product. We are, we are adding to a standard product that came out of those previous installations, adding to it because Caroline County came up with some additional suggestions and desires for the software that the previous users had not.
How many counties in Virginia have you used a prorated system before we started this?
One, Powhatan County.
So that's fully operational?
Right, they have been for three years, I'll say.
Now, but I would like to know how much money, if it, if it's fully operational there, then tell me what's taking four years to implement in Caroline County?
There were uh a lot of nuances with the way we were getting the data from your old system that was different, uh from your current AS400, your Bright system, uh that was, that was a bit of a struggle. And then there were also different requirements here than any other county we had seen. Like I said, there's some really good suggestions, there's some very thorough things that Caroline County is doing, uh but previous customers had not required of us. So the software is evolving and being enhanced as part of this process to implement it.
But the more I dig into it, it feels like we're paying you to develop a product that you can sell elsewhere, rather than delivering us a product that we can enhance so so that we are a partner.
We had the base product price, which was.
We're paying the cost.
Well, no, we had the base product price, which was part of the RFP process. And then we've gone through these enhancement requests, and as I said, waived the cost on a number of them, shared the cost on a number of them, because we do agree that there's an investment being made mutually to get the product to its next level.
That's why I want to know how much we've invested in four years, how much we've invested.
Yeah, it's probably with the, with the, it's, we're under, as as Mr. Cully said, we're under, we have not billed out the whole contract. I think the whole contract was about four hundred thousand. And and so we've not billed out the whole contract, and then we've got this request for these additional enhancements on top of it. But we, we've been billing against the original RFP contract to this point.
Which was, you're saying, four hundred and some thousand?
Yeah.
Five hundred thousand.
It was.
In our, in our report, you've got replace accounting system, five hundred thousand, and we spent four hundred and sixteen.
Okay, all right, that sounds.
I'm just saying, that's what's in in our report. So so the enhancer then will take you to the four ninety plus?
Yes, we're billing out the rest of the contract.
And we're still not where we need to be yet.
Well, we're working toward that.
I'm going to ask the question again, and we're still not where we need to be yet. In other words, there's more work to be done.
There's more work to be done, absolutely. The project is not over.
So so we're not going to, we're going to get to the five hundred, and there's going to be some additional costs?
No, no, the the cost that we are proposing, the cost we were requesting this evening, is to complete that and the additional amounts that's still on the contract that we've not been able to bill, because the milestones have not been hit, those amounts will be billed as we go live on the system. So we're not looking for additional funds beyond that.
You put an RFP out for five hundred thousand, and you're at four sixty. Then why would you need another thirty-five if you already, you still have forty thousand left in the original RFP?
Yeah, they.
Was that, talk to me, I'm, I'm listening, Mr. Cully.
Go ahead.
Because that part of the contract, they haven't met those milestones, so we're not paying on that. These are additional.
Why would I pay for something new if you haven't met the old?
Because to meet the old is is pieces of training and getting it running. We need, we need the additional enhancements in the Commissioner's Office, the Treasurer's Office and in Utilities to install it and run it. We don't, Mr. Bassoon's not going to want us to turn it on and pay for everything when he knows it's not going to do some of the things they want it to do. So we want the enhancements, we have a test area, we have a live area and a test area. The test area is is running right now where uh the Commissioner's Office, Treasurer's Office can do things in the system. It's not live, not live as far as being used to generate tax bills. That's still being done in AS400 to make sure it's doing what it needs to do. So when we turn it on, it's going to work the way we anticipate it to work, the way the old system did things. It may be a different way of doing it, but eventually you'll get the information that you need for abatements and then generate land book and taxes and business licenses and all the various things they do in the Commissioner's Office. They need those enhancements to the product to make sure all of that stuff's working the way they want to see it. So we can get.
Can I explain this, Mr. Cully? Can I explain these things I used to sell us? What, I mean, the analogy is, we spent, we put on an RFP for five hundred thousand dollars to buy a car. The car is going to work fine for everybody. Mr. Bassoon needs some extra things to make the car work for him, as does the Treasurer. The car is going to be available for five hundred thousand. This extra thirty-six thousand will give him a adjustable seat and it'll give the Treasurer whatever she needs. But those were not part of the original RFP. But but then I, then I don't understand why that's not part of the origi- Because it's never part of the original, it's never part of the original RFP. Let me finish. If your standard operating procedure is to have all of these um needs, part of the Treasurer's Office is part of the Commissioner Revenue's Office, why would you go in and buy a Volkswagen when you know you've got ten kids? It it wouldn't, it doesn't make sense to me. No, there's no, there's no system, I I sold these systems for ten years. I understand what you're saying. There's no system that satisfies everybody's needs.
Mr. Cully would like to answer this.
We didn't hire a consultant to develop the RFP. So we worked in-house to try to come, so so we could have spent this thirty-six on the front side, maybe a hundred grand with a consultant to prepare the RFP. We did it as best we could in-house. It was around the committee of of the Commissioner Treasurer Utilities Plan and to, and we thought we had captured the things that we needed. And it's a, the kind, the the RFP proposal lists out what they propose to do. We thought we had caught, but when you actually start seeing it on the screen and it doesn't work the way you anticipate it to work, it's hard to capture all that in verbiage in an RFP. The RFP was pretty thick to begin with. And so we missed it, but it it wasn't intentional. We thought we had covered everything.
Intentional.
And so we've gotten to a point.
But Charlie, we, 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 I've responded to GFOA RFPs. That's the Government Finance Officers Association. They got everything in there. They still miss things. There's, there's, there's no one system that satisfies everybody. And I under, and I understand that. But after four years of developing and testing and investing half a million dollars, to me, to me, maybe not to the other members of this board, maybe not to Mr. Thomas, but to me, we ought to be farther along down the road.
Well, yeah, yeah, uh, on, one, four years on this one piece, so we started with five. So that was put in at first, so we've only been working on it for two years, so I mean.
I didn't say we were doing it on one piece. I don't, I don't want you to add words to my words. I didn't say that. I'm asking direct questions about dollar figure, about cut over date, not what part you cut over, what part you did and what part you. I'm, I'm just asking one whole question rather than, I'm not trying to place blame, I'm just saying, I want to be down, I want this to be operable. I want this to be working. I don't want to be paying for two systems. I don't want to to have confusion between, and I don't know how much confusion it is in in the offices, I don't know, but I know there's some.
Correct.
So so I just want to bring things under one umbrella so that we can work to make all of our financial um accounting processes reasonable, easy to find, easy to use, and efficient.
We we are striving to do that as well. I will tell you that when we, our first number one choice uh systems that we brought to you, that quote was for four years for the development and install. So it it's sort of, we thought we were going to get this done in less time than four years, and it's taken uh longer than we thought. And part of that has been the development of proration, which was uh uh more difficult than they had anticipated that to be uh um that it touched so many places inside their system and they had to program a lot more things than they thought when they bid that out. We knew going in that they didn't do proration, they were going to have to develop that. That's not part of the enhancements here. Um, so nobody, I would say, wants it turned on anymore than what we do in admin and finance.
I didn't say that we didn't.
We, we're trying to get there. I mean, that's what we're doing.
That's not what, I didn't say we weren't trying.
Can I add one thing? Part of the delay, part of the four years, I think this is an important point to make, is that you all actually awarded us a contract before Powhatan County did. Powhatan went ahead as our first prorating site. Caroline County made the decision, we went up, we went live on finance, payroll and HR, made the decision to let us go through with them the initial development of the proration. So for a while, we were kind of on hold, waiting to get to a point where the product was was proven as far as the proration aspect.
That was our decision.
That was your decision to to wait. So that's a part of the reason that that we, that this has taken this long. We kind of put this on hold on the Treasurer and Commissioner's side to get through the process of implementing in Powhatan County and then came back to you and said, okay, that's done, that's ready, let's start to dig into this more with you. As we dug into it more with you much more recently, then we came up with some other enhancement requests that they did not have, that Caroline County sought to have in the product.
So you have no issue with me calling Powhatan and having the discussion about the use of this Keystone product?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's been using it for about three years.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'd ask that you give me the freedom to contact Powhatan County.
That is, that is fine, Mr. Underwood, certainly, bye.
I just have one comment to follow. Mr. Thomas and I have worked in the software arena, but the, to only need less than ten percent of the contract award for enhancements is actually.
It's unbelievable.
Is incredible, because typically I will see enhancements be twenty-five to forty percent of what the original bid was to get you where you need to be. So I do understand the cost sharing and I do understand the weight while Powhatan, you know, finishes, so we're not shouldering all of that. They've got ideas, and I know every, one of the dilemmas with this, with the AS400, and Mr. Thomas and I have talked about this. You can almost buy an AS400 at Goodwill.
If you want to blame, the blame is we stayed on the AS400 way too long.
And and you and I debated that for five years before we went, because there was just no good place to go as we found out.
And I debated it for five years before that.
Right, that's what I mean, for five years before that, you and I talked about the AS400 just being, you know, what, when's the last one going to be able to be purchased, because that day is coming. Hang on to ours as long as it works, somebody will buy it, because there's plenty of people in it.
Mr. Celia and Mr. Thomas, this is not about placing blame.
Oh, no, I understand.
I just want to know, simple answers.
Yep.
How much we spent, when the cut over date, when we can anticipate this working well, operably, fully for the the employees of Caroline County, that's all. If if we were working for a large ERP vendor, we would not get cost sharing on these enhancements. And the bill would, would be a lot larger every time there was an upgrade, because they'd have to redo the enhancements every time. I've seen that happen. I've seen people spend millions of dollars to duplicate something that was in another system's product. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve the supplemental appropriations for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five in the amount of thirty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars from the unencumbered balance for the purchase of Keystone enhancements.
And I will second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Mr. Underwood is there? Motion passes. And Mr. Underwood, you certainly can still meet and talk about this and get the information uh that you need with them. I'm sure they'll be glad to meet with you. All right.
And Madam, just for the record, I still wonder how much money we've spent year-to-date, if you could reiterate that.
Mr. Cully, you got that?
The 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 number that I was given from the status of capital project is four hundred and sixteen, six, twenty-two. That's total, it's not year-to-date, that's total on the contract. That's total we've spent since we've had, that's total we've spent with Keystone over the life of the Keystone contract, not year-to-date. I I don't know year-to-date.
Thank you, Mr. Cully. And uh I have totally skipped over public comment. Thank you, Mr. Thomas, for bringing that to my attention. So at this time, let's slip back uh and open the floor and say if there is anyone at this time that has uh anything they would like to address to the board, please come forward at this time. And you have three minutes to make a statement. Is there anyone who would like to address the board tonight? Is there anyone who has anything they'd like to say? Seeing none, I will close po- public comment. All right, what else did I miss? Okay.
Done that any earlier, it was before seven-thirty, so.
Oh, that's right. That's eighteen minutes late. Okay, that takes us to number six, discussion of Caroline County Tax Relief Programs. Who's taking this one? Anybody?
Madam Chair, I think I had asked for that to be put on the agenda um several meetings back, I think maybe in December. Uh, my concern was. Uh, my concern was and is that we're we're giving tax relief in the county um to a tune of about $1.7 million for all the programs that we um have within the county. And I I think it's worthwhile to sit down and take a look. Huh? 7.5. I thought it was 1.7 tax month.
1.7 for land use, but to you add.
Yeah, I'm just only talking about land use.
Okay.
And 7.5 is total. Yeah, I I'd like to for us to sit down and take a look and see if the programs that we're giving tax relief for, is it really doing what we want it to do? And is it fair to all of the citizens of the county? Let me give you an example as we talked about land use. I know we give land use to ensure we don't want people selling and developing here, but we have other now ordinances in place that says you, we can't build here, you can't build there, you can't build there. When a person sells a piece of property that's in tax in land use to a developer, let's say they pay five years back in terms of tax. Back, it goes back, but if they've had that property for 25 years and you're collecting only five years, the other taxpayers of the county are the ones who are paying for that. I think the right way to do the land use piece of it, particularly for our farmers, is to, and we're one of only 13 counties that charge tax on farm equipment. I think we should take a look at that because it brings in about $350,000 in tax revenue from the equipment. Most of the land, some of the many land farmers are renting land from people who don't even live in the county or taking and getting this advantage. And we're we're losing tax money. And it's not fair to the other taxpayers within the county. You can't take advantage of that. And then, like I said, you keep it for 20 years, then you sell it. Well, you know, in the contract, it's going to say that you're going to pay those five years of back tax at the value. So they're still not paying. I just think it's unfair. So I think all the programs should be looked at and evaluated by us to make sure there are no unintended consequences.
Very good. Take it into consideration, Miss uh Mr. Underwood, and I'll meet with Mr. Kelly and see the best way that we can work along with uh Mr. Bassoon.
Can can we have a question?
Yes, Mr. Thomas.
Mr. McKenzie, the the law says that we only can go back five years to recover.
Yes, those are that's those are the rollback taxes that we can charge.
Okay, so so it's nothing we can do to to change that at all?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. The the one thing I uh when Mr. Underwood brought up this idea in December when we talked about it, I wanted to do something for farmers directly. And I thought of a discount for land that was being farmed. But as he said, sometimes it's being farmed by a resident, but the land is owned by somebody outside the county. So I think when we start doing the budget, that we should look at removing any tax on farm equipment.
Correct, that's what I agree.
We had that discussion.
I think that's the first step. I think that's, you know, that's where I'd like to to start, especially with some things in Washington that are going to hurt hurt farmers right away. So we need to make sure we take care of our farmers. And and that's what I'm going to push for when we do budget. So it sounds like we can agree on that.
I think we should tell Mr. Colley now that we're because I'm I'm in favor of removing the machine tool tax on farmers on our our. Mr. Bassoon, what is what is the?
The dollars, the the last year's book um totals for um the total of 2024 farm equipment tax dollars was $254,887.79.
Less than a penny.
Yeah, it's so that's where I'd like to to start because.
Do that retroactively, Chris? Can I do that retroactively?
No, no. Yeah, we'd have to amend the ordinance and um and actually, so the answer to your question, no, we'd have to amend the ordinance. And I was.
So that's a yes.
No.
We can't do it retroactively.
But you said we'd have to amend the ordinance and then we could do it retroactively.
No, no, we'd have to amend to to work prospectively.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we're going to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
But don't ever give me an option that there's a yes in there because I'm taking.
Well, let's, I want to go back to what we were discussing a second ago. I brought up the statute and I want to clarify my response to you about the five years. Our existing ordinance were limited to five years. The the statute gives you an option to do that five-year look back, just a clean, simple. There's also an option for a sliding scale ordinance, which would be a whole different method of calculating rollback taxes. You, I could certainly look into that, but that is not what Caroline's ordinance currently does. Um, so it could be another option about calculating. I I I don't know, just off the top of my head, how those two compare in in the amount that you can recover. But I just wanted to kind of clarify my answer. Under our current ordinance, five years, the law does allow a different type of look back called a sliding scale ordinance.
Can you compare the two to see which would be greater?
I'm happy to do that.
Please.
And Mr. Thomas, I and board, I would suggest that we give staff some time to look at and Mr. McKenzie time to look at these things. Also time for us to talk to some of the farmers in the area and think about different things.
I've talked to some of the farmers.
Mr. Thomas, thank you. I have the floor. Uh, things that I would like to to address and uh other ideas that I've had from from people in the area. So I don't really want to move on this tonight, if that's okay with the board. I think we need to get some information. We need to have all our options because farming is is Caroline. So we don't want to rush without all the information.
Ms. Long, I'm not willing to roll back land use. Land use needs to stay in place, but the but the actual personal property and farm equipment.
We need to give direction.
We need to, we need to do that because that's going into Mr. Colley's budget. But I'm not willing to revisit. Land use comes with a lot of issues. And I've talked to Mr. Bassoon about land use and the impact that it has and the communities that rolled it back and the zoning changes that come with that are not pretty. Um, so I'm not willing to look at land use, but I am willing to actually get rid of the machine, the um personal property on farm equipment for farmers. So I would start there.
To look at the difference in property that is farmed by citizens, that is owned by citizens as compared to to.
You wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to.
I I I want to see it all.
Want to tell them you've got the floor?
Yes, I have the floor, Mr. Black.
Thank you.
But I'll give it to you now.
I don't think you could, I mean, I I I see what you're saying, but I don't think you can discriminate against if someone's farming it versus someone's in land use and not farming it. Like, I don't, I don't see how you could say, hey, we're going to give a discount to this person, but not this person.
But I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm saying we need to know the percentages of farms that are owned
Right.
by the farmers and how much is leased out and if leasing is addressed differently, that type of thing. So I think we need to give staff some some time and we need to sit down and with maps and we need to have a work session. I'm sorry, guys, but I really like work sessions. Mr. Black.
Um, I guess my question is, and I'm just going to play devil's advocate for a second, and I I found this, Mr. Underwood. I I appreciate you bringing this up because I found it eye opening um when I looked at it. And I guess my question is, and playing devil's advocate for a second, is if you're going to do another relief program, I think, Mr. Underwood, you brought it up because you were concerned about the relief programs that we're giving, right? So if you if you take away the tax on the farm equipment, which I'm not saying is a bad idea, I'm just saying it's another relief program that we're adding. So then you're you're taking revenue from the county. So then um you're going to put a burden if we need, if we need to make that up somewhere else, you're putting a burden on someone else to make that up. And um and then the other second question is, like, let's say someone's got a construction company. Why aren't we, you know, we have lots of people who are contractors, you know, why don't we have, we have plenty of people who are contractors? So the devil's advocate situation may be saying, well, why don't I give them tax relief too? Because we have lots of people that are, you know, are hardworking citizens that are contractors. Why don't we give them, you know, relief on their personal property tax? So so are we are we snowballing down something? Are we going down a hill here um that is with no return?
Okay, give them that property that can be discussed in a work session.
Can I answer your first question? All right, we'll talk, discuss it later. If you, Madam Chair.
I told Mr. Thomas he can go next. Mr. Thomas.
I I don't need a work session on this. I think we need to give staff direction right now as to what programs we want to look at. And when we give them that direction, they can come back and tell us. If you want to do a more detailed look with staff, that's fine. But as far as I'm concerned, I I can vote right now on a farm relief program.
I'm 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 farm equipment, correct?
I think I'm, I think I'm close to four votes right now to get a farm relief right now. So we know what that's going to be, we know how much it is. If you want to talk to somebody about some other things, you have at it. But I'm going to be calling in to a work session if that's the case. I'm letting you know ahead of time. So Mr. Mr. Black, let me answer your first question about the tax relief. There are like there, there are only 13 entities in the state of Commonwealth of Virginia that charge on farm equipment.
I know, I understand.
So when you look around the Commonwealth, I think we want to do some of the things and and help our farmers to feel like we appreciate them. I wouldn't want them to be able to go to Hanover and and Hanover says you can farm here and all your equipment is free, but you have to pay uh farm for farm equipment in Carolina here out of the 200, however many county, I forgot how many counties in the state and how many entities, but.
132.
132. We're we're one of the 13 that charges for those that equipment. So I looked at that and say farmers do need a break there on equipment. So I said, well, then how do I recoup? If I'm going to give, how do I mitigate that loss? And then I started to look at how many people own property in the county who don't live in the county, don't farm, but they lease it. But yet they're getting the benefit of not paying the full tax on that because it's in land use. So the people that are paying for the services in the county are the other citizens. So it's that cost is being dispersed to you and I and every other taxpayer. So I said, I have to recoup some of that. And then I said, well, there are other programs that we need to look at to make sure they're doing what we intended to do. When we discuss changing properties to special exception and to M1, we're regulating where growth can occur. So I'm saying we should take the same ideology, we should take the same level, give it the same level of importance to make sure that one isn't benefiting versus the other, that we're all creating an equal playing field for the taxpayer. So that's, that was my rationale. That makes. I'm I'm going to make a motion that we direct county staff to put together the budget, removing machinery and tool tax on farm equipment and provide other information as needed as Mrs. Long asked.
Second.
Hold on just a moment.
It's.
And that machine, it's not machinery and tool tax, it's personal property.
It's just just farm equipment.
Farm equipment, personal property.
I will modify the farm equipment period. Farmer.
And I will second that.
Discussion.
Discussion. Mr. Bassoon, what's what's the rate on a million dollar combine again?
Well, farm equipment methodology right now, when someone buys a million dollar combine and they send that to us, it's 25% of original cost.
Okay.
So it'd be 25% of the million and then it starts to slide from there.
Okay, so it depreciates from 25% of its value already?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
And the and the 50% grant they got from the federal government has just gone away.
If they got a grant. Grant for what?
For that farm equipment.
If they got a grant.
That came from the White House, yes.
Well, could, it's fine. I really, I I have thought about this, the equipment sales tax and um and I am totally open to looking at that. However, with the board, give me the lens, I want to know how much, how many we're at before. We just say we're taking this amount of money out of our budget when we're right the starting our budget period now. Um, and bring it back whenever staff has more detailed as to what it's going to affect our budget, how we're going to administer it, how we're going to inventory it uh for the farmers. I just think it's if we're going to do it, which I hope we will, I want to do it right and I don't want anybody left out. And I think we don't rush major change like this one night, but I am one of those, so.
Ms. Long, Madam Chair.
I haven't made my comments yet. I I just want to, and and Mr. Black, I I caught the same thing you commented on and I was just waiting, but you beat me to it. Well, when we do provide these exemptions, for one, it does increase a burden for others. And I will remind the board that there are, there are options for farmers that own land that they get paid. We we have one in our recent memory where there was about an $850,000 purchase for riverfront property. And they got about $650,000 from a conservation trust. So they recouped a large portion of that of that land value that is now been put.
In land use.
In land use.
That's what I'm saying.
It's always been in land use, but now it's in a conservation trust, so it's protected uh from development.
We got these pro- tax processes.
Yeah, um, I mean, there there are avenues and and this this does seem, I I do agree with Ms. Long, it does seem a little hurried and I'd like to see more data. And I I I know who's been fighting us on our river permit and it's not a poor farmer. It's there, it's a group of very wealthy farmers that are think that the river, we're going to run the river dry. And they really don't care that Bowling Green doesn't have water, that Ladies Smith doesn't have water, don't have any ability to grow. Again, it's again, I I I just have, it's just seems a little rushed. I got a little little bad taste in my mouth right this second.
Right.
So that's where I am.
I agree. And and we're just asking the county administrator to put together this budget without that one thing.
Just as it set, it sets off.
But as it sets off to the side, when he comes back with the budget, he could say, I need that $250, we'll add it in and we'll discuss. But we want to give staff direction now, which is a lot easier than here's the budget and we say, oh, take that out and we got to find 250 that.
So what you want them to do is is put it in both ways of the budget because we're going to have work sessions on the budget anyhow. But we're not saying we're going to do, that's that's our starting point at looking at it while we look at these other things also.
Right.
All right.
So can I call the question? Let me go ahead and do that.
Depending on how you work it, word it now. Mr. Mr. Black.
I think the other thing too that we have to consider is like, for example, a farm equipment, like someone's got a pickup truck, farm use. I mean, that was, I remember, I remember, uh, you know, Sheriff Lippa used to talk about it all the time. There's like half the cars on the road in the country road are farm use. You know, I mean, so I guess we have to like, is farm equipment, like, what are we detailing as farm equipment? Are we, are we, are we saying it's only like the combines? Or are we saying it's like someone's got a, you know, pickup trucks on their farm?
Mr. Bassoon, answer that because that was a general assembly issue.
Just real quick, anything that's got a title and registration to be driven on the road is not farm equipment. So trailers and um farm use, you know, folks that have those those types of plates, anything registered to DMV doesn't go on the farm equipment rendition.
Okay. Okay, that that helps.
That'll go onto the business personal property and then, you know, that affects our PPTR and all that that stuff.
Okay.
All right, so if I am understanding, we are going to move that staff look into this, give us, do a, as I do work on the budget, do two columns with, without, come back with recommendations.
No, the motion is just without.
Just without, all right. Uh, to uh show in the budget the what the equipment tax would be without, what the difference would be on our budget without the tax, correct? All right, we're not making any decisions. This isn't at this time, but we're getting all the informa- information on the topic. All right, that's the motion. Do I have a second? Alright, that's the motion, do I have a second?
I seconded it.
Alright, so I have motion of second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Nay. Better do a roll call.
Mister Mister Black? Mister Thomas? Um aye, Mister Forehand? Mister Sealy?
Aye.
Mister Underwood?
Nay.
So moved. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, and. Number seven. This is uh in discussion of the uh property that we bought. Adjacent to the administration office to enlarge the parking lot, there's a piece of land left with the house on it and. Mister Cully needs to speak to us about that.
We just wondered what the board's thought uh uh intention was, I've, I've asked the building official to go through with public works to see what. What uses that building might have other than a residence, even it was running as a flower shop, but it's not really a business, it's a residence. Um so it really has no purpose for any county space. Um it would, you know, need to be remodeled and I don't know what that would entail.
Put it on the market.
My only concern is it's the, it is right next to the administration building, we will never again. Have that opportunity. It it doesn't matter to me, but before we sell it, we we better make sure, cause if you ever wanted to add on to the building. You you, there's nowhere to go, you'd have to move and going backwards. Isn't really an option anymore because we're, we're already up against everything you can in the back.
Being back beyond the parking lot.
But you're gonna, you're gonna tear the house down.
Won't be the first house in town that's been torn, I mean, when you think about it, there are a couple of houses in town that have been torn down over the years. Um I I don't know the good answer today, let's let them go through and look at it. Um but my concern is, is that that's kinda where we are.
I'd like to just get an appraisal at least to see.
That's fine, I I I'd like to know more particulars, let's see what, what's really wrong with it, cause. If we sell it and somebody else tears it down, we're gonna go, oh.
We're not gonna be spending the money, but.
Not only that, but Mister Sealy, but then the fact that we we are, I mean, Mister Cully's already talked about running out of space. So I mean, we do, yeah, I mean, so if we need. If we need more, another building or something like, we we would own that property, so I, yeah, I'm kinda reluctant, I kind of agree there.
But um, yeah, I. It's not a lot of land and I think it's a good idea to have it looked at, get an appraisal on it, but. Even if we needed to move a few feet over. To add a little bit on the side or add extra long parking lots, we can't make the land, it's there. Uh my other concern was if we sell it, it's a residential property, we have no control over what goes in there. Somebody gets a business license, they could put a vape shop next door, you know, something like that. And that's not a very good look for the county, so if this board's in agreement, we'll wait and see what building inspector says and. And uh maybe also send uh board members how much the size of the lot there. So they have a better idea.
I can do that.
Okay, alright, that fine with everybody, alright, we'll move on, thank you, Mister Cully. Uh don't sit down yet, do you have anything on the capital project update, or the planning commission? That we need to know about?
I don't think there's anything on capital project that needed pointing out, um. On the calendar, our March meeting is the eleventh and the twenty fifth, those are the two scheduled meetings for March. Um so that's, that's pretty much, I don't think there was anything else on the calendar, Pam and I talked about it, we couldn't think of anything right off hand.
When does the school board make their presentation, it's in March, right?
They should make it at the first meeting in March, I think they're behind like we are. We're gonna be a little bit behind because um we're, we're behind obviously with reassessment.
Anything else, Mister Cully?
Close, closed session. Closing more comments.
Can we do closing board comments now, please? Mister Black, do you have any closing comments? Mister Thomas? I just wanna remind everybody, if you haven't heard, that's, that uh school is closed tomorrow. Uh general district court is also closed tomorrow, so um if we get snow. As I said, stay home if you can, if you gotta go out on the roads, be safe. And that's the end of my comments, Mister Forehand.
If you don't already have your milk and bread, you probably missed out.
Not to mention eggs.
Add eggs, yeah, exactly.
You can't buy eggs anyways because they're always gone. I have no closing board comment.
Mister Underwood.
I have none, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mister Underwood, I will uh. Close session.
I move that this board convene in closed meeting pursuant to, one, the consultation of legal counsel and litigation exemption section two point two dash three seven. One one A seven A eight of the Code of Virginia. For consultation with the county attorney and discussion with staff regarding pending reg regulatory action. And zoning and tax collection, collection litigation involved in the county. Where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the board's litigating posture. Also, two, the contract exemption of section two point two dash three seven one one A twenty nine of the Code of Virginia. For a discussion of the terms of a potential incentive agreement related to a development project. In the Mattapani District, a state grant application and a cooperative agreement with King William County. Where such discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the county. And three, the real estate exemption of section two point two dash thirty seven, three seven one one. Eight point three of the Code of Virginia for discussion with county staff regarding the potential disposition of county owned real estate. For economic development purposes. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? We are in closed session.
I move that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors certify that to the best of their each board member's knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification applies and only such business matters that were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board. Need a second?
Second.
And a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Black, do you so certify?
I so certify.
Mr. Thomas?
I so certify.
I so certify. Mr. Forehand?
I so certify.
Mr. Sealy?
I so certify.
Mr. Underwood?
I so certify.
Right, so are we ready for a motion to adjourn, Mr. Kelly?
Second.
Have a motion to adjourn a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you everyone.